At four fifty-five, and I apologize, I know you thought that this meeting was going to start at four fifteen. The other one went slightly longer, and that was why. And I will call the meeting to order, and I will read a statement of the chair. Too many papers here. So this public hearing is convened pursuant to section four six four of the Local Government Act, RSBC two thousand and fifteen, to allow the public to make representation to council respecting matters contained in fourshore and lake regulations, fourshore and lake zoning amendment bylaw number one two nine four dot zero two two thousand and seventeen, OCP amendment bylaw number one two three zero decimal two zero two thousand and seventeen. Every person present who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. When speaking, please proceed to the microphone and commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. If they wish, members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at this public hearing is to listen to you rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. In accordance with the council procedure bylaw, presentations by members of the public shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes each. If a person has additional information that he is unable to provide within that timeframe, he shall be given further opportunity to address council after all other interested members of the public have been heard a first time. Please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion during this public hearing so that we may ensure as impartial a hearing as possible. After this public hearing is adjourned, council members will not speak to the public on this matter until the matter has been dealt with at a public meeting. After this public hearing has concluded, council may without further notice give whatever council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. And confirmation of advertising. Notice of this public hearing was given in accordance with the Local Government Act and the community charter by distributing the notices follows. Publishing in two consecutive editions of the Asousa Times on September the fifth and September the twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Placing the notice on the bulletin boards in the town hall and Planning and Development Services Department on September the fifth. Posting the notice on the town's website on September the fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and distributing via E-News on September the seventh. And a summary of the staff report. The purpose of this meeting is to seek public input on fourshore and lake zoning amendment bylaw number one two nine four dot zero two two thousand and seventeen. An official community plan amendment bylaw number one two three zero dot twenty two thousand and seventeen, which we received first reading on July the fourth, two thousand and seventeen, and second reading on August the twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. This second public hearing is being held as new information has been provided to council, and one year has lapsed since the first public hearing. Bylaw number one two nine four dot zero two two thousand and seventeen. Amendments to the town of Asousa's fourshore and lake zoning bylaw are proposed to bring the bylaw more into conformity with provincial regulations, round out regulatory requirements, and add clarification to some provisions of the bylaw. Bylaw number one two three zero dot twenty two thousand and seventeen. The amendment to this, the official community plan bylaw, is proposed to incorporate a new fourshore and lake development permit area, FLDPA, for general permissions of private mortgages. And I'm going to ask Ms. McKay to give the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. A little bit of background here. The four aforementioned bylaws mentioned by the mayor were considered by council and public hearing was held on September seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen. Only the first two bylaws previously mentioned were actually required to proceed to a public hearing. However, staff had included the latter two in the public information package to ensure transparency with respect to the proposed change to the procedure bylaw and the ticketing bylaw. It was intended that all four bylaws would be brought forward for council's consideration after the public hearing. However, due to a number of contributing factors, including the loss of the director of planning and development, these bylaws have not yet been considered for adoption. So a little bit of overview for you with respect to the fourshore and lake zoning bylaw. In two thousand and seventeen, after five years of experience with the fourshore and lake zoning bylaw, staff determined it was time to update the bylaw. Council had approved the bylaw in two thousand and twelve, following public stakeholder recommendations the previous year from the Lake Recreational and Commercial Use Task Force. Bylaw objectives included sustaining Asousa's lake, sorry, Asousa's lake for the health of local fisheries, safe and orderly recreational and commercial use, and the continued attractiveness of Asousa as a resort community. The fourshore and lake zoning bylaw applies from the upland, the high-water mark, across the fourshore, and out to the municipal lake boundary in Asousa, which is typically about a hundred meters from shore. Four zones are demarcated. That is W one, public water use, including protected swimming areas; W two, private mortgage, typically for waterfront, single-family homes; W three, which is group or strata mortgage; and W four, commercial mortgage. Each zone has its own development standards, and a zoning amendment and a public hearing is required to accommodate different uses which are not permitted under the current zoning. An example of zoning amendment would be the recently adopted fourshore and lake zoning bylaw amendment to accommodate the floating water park in the W one zone at Gyro Park. With respect to the fourshore and lake development permit area, pending amendments included a proposal to add a fourshore and lake development permit area into the OCP to promote environmentally sensitive design of private mortgage facilities and to complement our fourshore and lake zoning bylaw. As explained below, these new permits will also compensate for diminishing provincial regulatory role for private mortgages. The Ministry of Forest Lakes Natural Resources and Operations has very different approaches for dealing with what it distinguishes as special permission and general permission applications for mortgage facilities. The ministry directly reviews all specific permission applications for larger mortgages such as group, strata, and commercial facilities, and also refers them to local governments for review and compliance with municipal requirements. Control of private mortgages, however, is another matter. In those cases, the ministry automatically grants a general permission if property owners conform to blanket conditions, usually on their own self-cognizance. This means that the province, and by extension, local governments are often unaware of what private mortgages are being built. In the view of many unaffected local governments, this regulatory shortfall has worsened with the ministry's announcement on January seventeenth that general permissions exclusions were being broadened with only a few areas, exception areas. To enable this shift, the ministry removed the previous surface limit of twenty-four meters for private docks, which is the same as in our bylaw. As a result of the aforementioned information, staff recommended that the town follow suit with other local governments by requiring development permits for private mortgages and instituting a fourshore lake and development permit area. The guidelines in our attached FLDPA, the fourshore and lake, fourshore development permit area, are modeled after those applied by the Columbia Shushaw Regional District and other municipalities, which in turn originated from the province's best practices. I just want to clarify something here, because I think there might be some confusion. The fourshore and lake development permit area applies specifically to private property frontage mortgage facilities. For in other words, you no longer require a permit from the province if you want to put a single dock in front of your single-family home, as long as it follows best pattern management practices and no changes to the fourshore are being proposed. So I think some people may be confused about what we're doing here, so I just wanted to clarify that. So, and then with respect to the provincial government update. The Okanagan Large Lakes fourshore protocol, this is taken directly from the Province of B.C. Environmental Protection and Sustainability website. Fourshore and repairing areas are important for biodiversity and provide valuable habitat for many species. During the planning and evaluation of works affecting the fourshore, consideration needs to be given to applicable legislation and to ensuring that any works do not impose direct or long-term cumulative impacts to the environment values at the site. The protocol document applies to all works below the high-water mark on the following large lakes: Mabel, Sugar, Okanagan, Kalamalka, Woods, Skaha, and Asousa. It will be used as guidance for all other lakes in the area of the Thompson-Okanagan region, including Vassillo Lake. So this document may also be utilized by provincial and federal agencies and local government in planning and decision-making processes. In January two thousand and eighteen, the Ecosystems Section updated the Okanagan Large Lakes fourshore protocol and developed additional accompanying guidance documents. These new documents replace the Okanagan Large Lakes fourshore protocol dated two thousand and nine and include the Okanagan Large Lakes fourshore protocol, guidance for freshwater mussels in the Okanagan, guidance for fourshore plants in the Okanagan, dock design criteria for Okanagan large lakes, shore-spawning coconie, freshwater mussels, and fourshore plants. These recent changes in provincial policy make it ever more important that the town proceeds with the proposed updates to our policies and procedures. With respect to the land use procedures bylaw, two small amendments are required to update our land use procedures bylaw to assist implementing the fourshore and lake development permits. These are: to include them under the director implying in Development Services delegated authority from council for approving development permits, and to add them into the development permit application form. It's noted that minor development permit fees of seven hundred and fifty dollars would apply under the land use plan bylaws scheduled to be, as long as construction value does not exceed a million dollars. Municipal ticketing information system bylaw. Lastly, amendments would also be required to our municipal ticketing information system bylaw to add offenses and fines for commencing work without a development permit. Impacts to the community are as follows. With respect to the community, consistent, clear, and effective regulations will contribute to achieving community fourshore and lake objectives and will create a loving playing field for all users. Additional demands on planning and development staff for new development permits are unknown at this time, but they should be manageable. Development permit fees will help offset the costs of additional town services. Timing actions need to cover off all regulatory shortfall for private mortgages. And long-term environmental sustainability of Asousa's lake is a primary concern of our community sustainability plan. Thank you, Mayor McCordough.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. So I'm, I have received a letter from the strata plan, strata president, and I'm wondering if, and that would be Brian Karen? So would, I see that you are down to speak. Would you prefer that I read the letter first, or are you going to speak to it when you come up?
No, I can read the letter.
I can read the letter?
You don't-
You don't have to read the letter.
Because it's part of the agenda-
Oh, part of the agenda. Pardon me. Okay, I won't. So it's part of the agenda. Fair enough. So we will now go to the, the public presentations, and I will ask the people who've signed up here, I will ask you to keep your presentations to five minutes, and we will certainly give you an opportunity to give other information, additional information if needed at the end. So first is Brian Karen. Please come up and state your name and your address when you come to the microphone. Thank you.
Yes, Brian Karen, and I'm at three ten seventy-six hundred Cottonwood Drive, and I'm the president of the strata council. We voiced our concern about bylaw twelve ninety-four, amendment three six one, which is the amendment that requires a boat lift to be within half a meter of a dock at the first hearing. And at that hearing, we were told that the town was going to give us some information of why that amendment was made, because it's totally out of the blue. If you look at what it replaced, there's no, no connection between the old three six one and the new three six one. The, unfortunately, because of circumstances, this is drawn out for a very long time, and we understand that everybody's been busy, but we don't feel that we've had that answer, specifically why the town feels that a boat lift must be within half a meter of a dock. There were some pretty general reasons given in the staff report of why those changes were being made, but they're very, very general. And, you know, for instance, if this is referring to a, to an actual provincial regulation, you know, we'd like to see that regulation, because it hasn't been shown to us yet. You know, I think there's been, I've heard comments at the, the meeting of the whole, committee of the whole, last time that I was here, and that it's only one strata that's affected. And, you know, one strata, you know, is severely affected, but there's lots of other people on the lake that aren't affected. Why they're not here, I don't know. Maybe they are tonight. So far, they haven't. But, you know, this is not a small matter for our strata. If this bylaw's enacted, there's approximately fifty taxpayers, they're going to lose their primary reason for buying an Asousa, because they won't be able to have a boat. In addition to that, there's a hundred and eighty-five taxpayers total in our strata who are going to see your property value drop, you know, if we can't provide mortgage. And if we have to provide mortgage in the way that you've, you know, outlined in your bylaw, that's probably going to cost us four hundred thousand dollars to construct a dock. And this is going to be a major dock, at least about seventy meters of the frontage will be taken by a dock, so there's going to be a lot, a lot going into the lake to satisfy this little bylaw change that you're making. And, you know, we don't really want to spend that money, and we don't think that, you know, that a dock in the lake is, is any better than what we're doing now environmentally. And we just hope that, you know, before there's a third reading of this bylaw, that somebody, some of you people out there who are, I don't know when this is going to be read, whether it's going to be after the election or not, but that somebody at least asks your staff to tell you, you know, what is the specific reason why it has to be within a half a meter of a dock? You know, what, you know, what's the, you know, the reason for this at all? And that's been our question all along, and we're still asking it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Derek Calfass?
May-
And I apologize, did I-
Mayor-
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor McCord- did you want me to speak to this?
If you would like to speak right away to anybody that has-
Well, it's earned, please do.
Because that's exactly-
I think, I think most of the people here have the same concern, so maybe we should just speak to that-
Absolutely.
And see where we go.
Go ahead.
So that, you know, in the issue, being transparent, it's a tricky situation, because the Crown will not specifically identify that you can't have a boat lift unless it's within point five meters of a dock. However, what they will say is that the Crown, and this is what the words that they've given to me, the Crown does not need a policy to justify why it does not permit that specific use. But what they have stated is that any use of the fourshore requires a permit from the province, in the same way that if the strata were to go ahead and put in the boat lifts every year, they need a permit to put each one in and a permit to remove each one. Their preference is that if you're going to proceed with a proposal for the strata mortgage facility, and that this is what you want to do, is to continue with the continued use that you've been having, that you put that in your proposal with your justification of why you would like to have that continued use of the fourshore. Then that proposal will be referred to the local government, which case the local government has an option to say, it's been our experience that this use has been ongoing, and we feel that we could recommend that the use continues, for example, and grant a variance to our bylaw in this case. But for us to remove it, that, that sentence from the recommendation, on the basis that it is a better system for the strata, would be providing a difference, a different scenario than elsewhere on the lake, where our preference is to continue the development permit process to have persons put in a dock and a boat lift for on their private mortgage facilities. So we would be giving something different to the strata that we would not give to the rest of the community, for example. I recognize it's the only strata mortgage system on the lake that uses the boat lifts, and the Crown is well aware of it, and the Crown is waiting for the proposal for, for the mortgage facility, because I understand that the lease is up for the mortgage facility.
Twenty twenty-one. Okay. Thank you.
I hope you clarified a little bit of it.
It sounds confusing.
It is confusing.
Yeah, for sure. But we'll continue with the hearing, and would you like to continue?
Yeah, I would.
Sure, go ahead.
My name's Derek Calfass, and I live at two two one seventy-six hundred Cottonwood Drive, Casa de Lago. I've been a permanent resident there for eleven years. During that time, I have put my lift in the water, I have removed my lift, we have been in compliance with all of the existing bylaws over the past five years. We have never had an incidence of any problem, of any, any problem of any kind in that eleven year period. Now, one year ago, by merely tweaking the bylaws as it was presented to us, this sentence was thrown in, about the half meter. We have asked numerous times for justification of it, you gave me kind of a very, very fuzzy one just now. And the whole logic here is, as Brian had said, if we now have to comply with this bylaw, then we have forty to fifty taxpayers, boat owners, family people, who will no longer be able to put their boat in front of our property. It will decrease our property values by whatever amount, I don't know, but it will, it'll hurt the saleability of the property, because a lot of people that buy want to have a boat. So, but this sentence will do nothing but damage us. So why do you have to have it in there now? Why could you not just take it out, forget the fuzzy little reason that you've not given us any true explanation for? The rest of all of this is perfectly fine. None of us have any issues with any of this. But to suddenly impact fifty shareholders, not only us, but the hundred and eighty people that own there, are impacted by this one sentence, to the point where we don't know what we're going to do. So if this goes through next spring, trust me, we will all put our boat lifts back in the water. Then you'll be dealing with whatever you're going to deal with it, and I don't think nobody wants to deal with that. So, anyway, that's the situation. It's not a minor thing, it's very, very significant to a hundred and eighty, plus many other people on the lake who aren't here to represent themselves. But we travel, we see the lake. In fact, the stratas on either of our side are not in compliance with this bylaw. They all have lifts, not just us, in their stratas. The way their docks are built, they're more than half a meter on each side of the lift. So they're in violation. So you can add on Santa Rosa and Sola Vida, but being in violation is by law.
And Walnut Beach.
Pardon me?
And probably Walnut Beach.
Oh, and Walnut Beach, and probably the public dock, probably everybody. It makes zero sense, no justification for it. It's not, it does nothing, absolutely nothing, to help the environment or do anything, it's just illogical. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Calfass, there's that question.
I should know, it's to Director McKay.
Oh, sorry, to Director McKay.
Director McKay, that, that was a lengthy explanation, but I, if I can just ask you this, is my understanding that the Crown, or the, the province would like to see a proposal from the strata that will then come back to this council for consideration?
All right, the last thing that you regretted, and on the basis of a letter by Derek Frantolo, full of misinformation that was presented to the council, that we tried to get a copy-up, but we're never allowed a copy-up, but we know what was in it, was sent to the province, created all of this chaos around this situation. They then only gave us a five-year, ten-year deal, saying that within that five years we have to come up with a dock plan. All we really want to do is just have control over our waterfront, continue the status quo, which is not hurting or harming anybody. And carry on.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McKay, could you, would you-
Yeah, so my, my question is, is that, is my understanding correct?
We have until twenty-
Nope.
Sir?
Ms. McKay, this is after, yeah.
Sorry.
That's more or less what, exactly what the representatives at the Crown have said to me, is that they're waiting to see a proposal come forward from the strata. They've not specified that, that it needs to be of any particular form or character, that they're waiting for the proposal to come forward. They are the ones that have jurisdiction over the fourshore. We do not have jurisdiction over the fourshore. What they would then do in due course is we get a referral from the Crown, asking us for comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I will go to Mr. Whitherley.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mrs. Mayor and councilors. I'm Herb Whitherley, I live at thirty-two oh nine Jasmine. And as I see it, I think we fall in the W one zone, a little different than most. Ten years ago, when I looked at the property that I now own, it had a wooden dock down in the water, and I was fully aware that my property line was fifteen meters back from what I'm going to call high-water mark. At that point, before I bought my home, I came in and I talked to the planner at the time, and he explained to me, my question was, can I have a dock? I want my boat in there, and that's why we were buying there. And he said, absolutely. He told me that he classified us as the upland property owners, which I kind of thought about that for a few minutes, and I thought, well, if he's thinking that's a road allowance, maybe I am. But I see now that it's clearly in print here that I am not that, and the town is classifying themselves as the upland property owners, so I can accept that. But what I did do on the notification that that dock, there was a dock in there, big old wooden dock falling apart unsightly, it was claimed to me that if the owner that I bought the property from said that that was his dock and he was maintaining it, then it would fall into my property, and it was up to me to maintain it. So I did, I tore it out, I bought aluminum boat lift, aluminum docks, and I put it in, and I've maintained it like that ever since. So I read all the information that has come. I find it overwhelming. I find stuff in here about fisheries, about prop wash, and it makes me wonder, are fisheries involved in this? And you're putting documents in here that say they are. Today, I pulled my boat out for the winter, the lake has gone down, and, yeah, I'm, I was concerned today that my prop might have been hitting the bottom of the lake, and I'm fully aware what prop wash does. I'm a fisherman, I enjoy all that. But I have no control over the lake, the level of the lake, as we all know, you know, what happened here over the last year and what may happen again. But I would hate to think that there's another governing body that might come along here and tell me to take my dock out. It could be fisheries, it could be federal, we're not even talking about that, but there is a documentation in here that talks about fishing, fish life, you know, and I can appreciate that. So my question basically leads me here today, is I just want to make sure that my investment of my docks, my lift, my boat, let's just call it a hundred thousand dollar investment, that I can still use it. We really like where we live, we like to be able to go down and, and get in our boat and go. That fifteen meters that goes from my property line out to the lake, I was told that that is deemed a boulevard by the last director of Public Works, and he told me that it was up to me to keep it clean. I kind of had a laugh with him about it, but I, much like all the other people that live in the Acacia, Acacia Court area, we do a pretty good job of keeping it clean, and it's used by the public, and I think we're all pretty proud of it. But now I wonder, when I read this item in here, where it's saying that the semi-waterfront parcel owners between Jasmine and Acacia Court, and I'll skip a little way through it, it said, "may apply to the town," and then in brackets, it says that you're the upland owner, and with permission from the provincial government, can apply for a lease. For ten years, I've never applied for a lease. It's making me think, what are we facing here? Or is there something in this document that needs to be passed? Like, there's a lot of word changes, and, you know, I look at, you've taken out the word "means" in places, and so I almost need to go to a lawyer to find out why you're doing that. But I'm here to ask, am I in some sort of future conflict? I haven't had a lease to date. Can I get a lease tomorrow? Would you give me a lease tomorrow? Somebody told me they went down and talked and said, can we get a lease? And it was basically explained to them that, I don't know what you're talking about, there's no leases available. So it's in print here, maybe they were wrong, so maybe I can get an answer on that. But is there something in these documents that could make anybody in this room think that in a month, two, ten, a couple of years, some form of government's going to come along and tell me to get my boat lift out and never put it back in? If that happens, I think the value of my property will go down. I do appreciate that, to get to my boat lift, I have to walk across fifteen meters- I do appreciate that to get to my boat lift, I have to walk across 15 meters of town property that I do maintain, and I appreciate that. But if I lose the opportunity to have my boat and my lift in there, and when the day comes that I ever want to sell that property and move to another piece of property, I'm going to be faced with telling somebody that, I'm sorry, you can't have a boat down there. So I think it could affect my property. So, I'm probably pretty much up with my five minutes, so.
I think so, we're keeping track.
Can I get a lease? You've got it in writing here, can I get a lease? I've never had one yet.
I don't think we can give out leases, can we? Can I ask Ms. McKay to respond to that?
Oh, thank you, Mayor McCordough. This one's even trickier. Surprisingly, no, you cannot. I have spoken directly to the province, and the only way, and I know it says in the bylaw that semi-waterfront properties on Acacia are granted this special opportunity to get a permit from the town. However, that actually isn't correct either. The only way that the town could grant you permission is if we took a head lease of the foreshore area in front of our property, because it's municipal road right-of-way, and then we could give you a permit to have your dock there.
So when are you going to do that?
I guess that's a question for a future council meeting, but we're not looking for trouble, I guess. May Mr. McCord, or Mr. Remanco may want to speak to that.
I think historically, when we go back to what was the Lake Committee, that the desire was to try and clarify on Jasmine, the Jasmine property owners, providing them a sense of comfort relative to their accessibility on the lake. At that time, the thought was, without doing the research, is that we could do a lease, and then everything would be good, everybody would be happy. Unfortunately, we found out that what we wanted to do, we couldn't do. And that leaves us in the position that we are in now. We thought that we could, as the upland property owner, we could provide the lease. Now we can't, because we found out that we, in fact, have to.
Right.
We have to take a head lease, and the province would not let us sublease.
But the development permit process also fixes this problem for you, and for the town, in a sense, for the Acacia properties. Because we could issue a development permit, because it's our property.
So could you explain that? Like, I've been doing development my whole life, why, when I have a home on Jasmine, what do you mean, I have to apply for a development permit? What is that all?
Well, your property isn't waterfront.
Yeah, okay, that's a very generic statement you're making, but what do you, what development permit would I apply for, and how would I do that?
Okay, so, the Crown is now saying that if you are not doing any changes to the foreshore, soil removal, tree removal, that kind of thing, and you want to put a dock in, and your boat lift in, and you're a private property owner, you could do so with the development permit, through the development permit process, through the town, through best practices, implementing their best practices, which I'm sure you've done there, I've been down there, I don't see anybody got any sort of, you know, big messes down there, anything like that. That's what they're suggesting, is that communities such as ours implement a development permit process for single-use, single-dock owners like yourself.
Is that a one-time permit?
That's correct.
So is that something I can pass on to somebody that purchases my property?
No, they're issued to the person that applies for the permit only.
So when I go to sell my house, I can say to them, they can go down and apply for their permit?
That's correct.
It will be granted for them?
That's the way development permits work, yes.
No, just a minute. Your statement that it will be provided is not.
That's what I'm asking, that's my statement, I'm asking.
Yeah, there's no guarantee.
Right. We don't know how long you're going to be there. The process for the province might change.
Yes.
We, you know, the province is basically saying that they don't want to be bothered with issuing permits for someone to put in a private dock facility off of a single-family home, basically. As long as you follow best practices, you're not disturbing the foreshore, you're not putting any soil down there, you're not removing any rocks, you're not removing any trees and that kind of thing, to put the dock in and remove the dock, then they don't, as long as you follow best practices of the province, you don't need their approval.
Thank you. So just one thing I would like to say to the mayor and council, please be cautious what you approve, because they're going to affect people such as myself and everybody else that lives on Jasmine, because these are changes compared to what we've seen.
It was, I believe, what they said was that what was put in there before was not quite right, and what, now we're having to change it, am I correct?
What this development permit process will enable us to deal with the issue positively, but it will only be able to deal with you, not, it's not something you can pass on. The, with the province stepping out of private mortgage and in single-family homes, the town having a development permit process enables the control of the foreshore for the betterment of the community overall, just to ensure that best practices are made. So if you, in fact, are doing a best practice dock off your foreshore, there shouldn't be no problem. I honestly should, shouldn't be a problem. But the permit should be issued. So this, in fact, will give you that sense of comfort, something we didn't have before.
Okay, so I won't be down, no, I will come down tomorrow, but I can't apply for a lease.
This one isn't good for me.
I can't apply for a lease, and I probably can't apply for the development permit tomorrow, right?
That's correct. Because this one not will come into effect, because council hasn't approved this.
So you can see, you can see that we on Jasmine are a little nervous, right? Because you're saying things in here that we can and should do, and maybe we're not prepared to do that.
Well, unfortunately, we're at the end of the boating season, so we'd have a little bit of time before you put back in again, right?
But that doesn't make me.
I know. But you do have a particular road, because Acacia Court is a town owned right-of-way and path in front, I believe yours is a little bit different than other people whose property goes right to the lake. Am I correct?
No, not right there, no.
In that? Oh, well, I remember, because I was on this foreshore committee, and that particular area was discussed at length with Mr. Cunningham.
Can I just bring us back into?
Yeah, sure.
Back into the public hearing process?
Yeah.
We've heard Mr. Witcherly's concerns?
Yes.
Now we're problem-solving.
Okay. We need to go on with, yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right. And we will continue on with the public hearing, and Mr. Renaud.
Ray Renaud, good afternoon, Mayor. I live at 3613 Jasmine Drive. I just want to echo the sentiments of Herb Witcherly. He very eloquently made his concerns known to this process. I just want to jump on that and add that I too have those concerns and others as well. Also like to say that I had a chance to talk to Ms. McKay after making an inquiry, and she was extremely helpful in guiding me through where we're headed.
Okay.
But we all have this very nervous feeling that if we look the other way, all of a sudden, boom, down come the dock police, and everybody goes, what up? Well, we made changes, and unfortunately, this is the new way. If Ms. McKay is transferred or out of here, we've got new council two years from now, the dock police come down and say, hey, you guys aren't compliant, none of you have a development permit. I'm not even sure right now if we're going to have to proceed in applying for a development permit, once you folks have approved this whole process. Or is it going to be left alone until such time as something triggers a development permit process? Can we get any kind of an answer to that question?
I think we need to go through the procedure properly and look at this zoning bylaw. We're also doing an OCP, Official Community Plan Review, in the next year where we would likely look at this again. Am I correct, Ms. McKay?
That's correct, and I was just going to say that this is the sort of things that I would put in a third reading report.
Yes.
For council to have that kind of information, the answers to these questions.
Okay.
Terrific, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Robert Wiser? I'm hoping I'm spelling, saying that correctly, is it Wiser?
Rupert Wiser, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, my writing's really bad. Okay.
Unit 267600 Cottonwood Drive, Casa Del Lago. I totally agree with everything that Derek and Brian had said, and I just want to throw my support behind that. We purchased there three years ago based on the fact that we could have our boat on a boat lift in the water and enjoy the lake, and we spent thousands of dollars on a boat lift to do so as well. And now in midstream, everything's up in the air, and it makes us very nervous as well. So I'd really like to push for the status quo. And I can't really see why a dock is more environmentally friendly than boat lifts, because boat lifts are only in the water six months of the year, docks in there permanently. So those are my thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of the docks aren't in permanently, as you saw, by the ice and high water this year, so I'm not sure that it's totally permanent. But we certainly appreciate you speaking, thank you. And Alan Taylor.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. I didn't plan on speaking at this function.
Could you just state your name, sorry?
Alan Taylor.
And your address?
I'm number 11, 7200 Cottonwood.
Thank you.
And I was asked by the president of the strata council to come and sit in and see what was going on, because they didn't have the information, I don't know why, I didn't have the information either. Any event, so I came along to listen, but I've noticed a couple of issues that got my attention. One was a question, really, what is going to happen to the existing docks? We have a foreshore lease at Solivita, it's been renewed, it's into its, I guess, 11th or 12th year. And when I look at, I would just hazard a guess, that we're non-conforming in some ways with this new bylaw, with the width of the dock, I'm sure it's more than five feet wide, and we certainly don't have steps up to the dock for pedestrian traffic. What is going to happen to the existing docks? Are they going to be grandfathered, or they will be?
Ms. McKay, could you answer that?
Again, they would be grandfathered for our bylaw purposes. When your lease requires renewal with the province, I guess they would refer it to us. We'd probably respond something like, it's been pre-existing for some time, and I wouldn't see why we would have any objection, as long as it's still met with, complied with the province.
So if we're looking at renovations and alterations, we would, it would happen, or is that something we have to apply to town?
You would still have to apply, the province has the jurisdiction over the foreshore. You need to apply to them and your rationale for whatever you want to do in the foreshore area, including your proposal.
Yeah, so just to add to that, the province has jurisdiction over the foreshore, and they also have jurisdiction over group mortgage.
That's correct.
And they're taking a specific interest in group mortgage, and how it goes about. So where the local government gets involved is only on a referral basis. So we may, as the local government, the council of the day, may be supportive of what is the status quo. However, that doesn't mean that the province will, in fact, approve the status quo.
Okay, thank you. Another question I had, it's just rather ambiguous, maybe I'm just not that bright, but I can't understand the pedestrian definition here. Could you explain what that means?
I'm sorry, which page are you?
It's pedestrian access. You replace mortgage facilities on page 26 of 30. Replace mortgage facilities shall not impede pedestrian access along the foreshore with this description, whatever it is.
I'm sorry, I'm probably not looking at the same page as you. Oh, with mortgage facilities shall be designed to maintain reasonable pedestrian access?
That's correct.
Along the foreshore by either providing sufficiently level ground access around the facility, or, basically, you can't put something in the way of people walking down the foreshore.
Well.
That's basically what it says.
And if we define foreshore, I take it in here, just from my cursory overview while I was here, I was looking at your changing definitions here of foreshore and so on?
Wait, I haven't changed the definition of foreshore.
That would be a provincial definition, probably.
Oh, I'm sorry, it says the crown land and all other lands between the high and low water levels, Osos Lake.
And then you've got natural boundary definition that's changed as well, isn't it? So, I'll be specific here, if you, now you have a dock that is connected to the land, and in some cases, the land, that's the property belonging to the strata, whatever, goes into the lake. If someone is walking through the lake, do you have to provide stairs or some access for them to go up and over the dock to the other side?
No.
Okay, good. Simple, so can I take some more time, like, hold, we literally want to talk about that?
Sure.
Eight seconds.
How many seconds?
Fifteen.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the end of my list here, the people that signed up. I'm going to ask if there's anyone who has a further submission. I will ask for the second time.
Mr. Grab. Jacob DeRab is my name, I live out of town, I live in the area A. I have some concern about something that I've seen close to where I live, at Reflection Point. There are property pins.
I'm sorry, but this is not the bylaw.
This ties about foreshore, because the definition I'm getting at.
Is it within town boundaries? Does it within town boundaries?
No. I would like to have a question regarding what is high watermark. Now, it's now changed because of natural boundary.
Mr. Grab, could you come in and ask about that, Ms. McKay? Yeah, at some further, you could check with her, and she would be able to give you that. But that is not part of this, of this event today, so I'm sorry, we can't answer that question right now. Specifically, to this bylaw only.
Okay, to this bylaw, I see the word ordinary, normal years. I see it provisioned on the page 25 or 30. Ordinary, normal years. Now, earlier this year, the MLA for Colona, Mr. Ashton, said we now have the new normal.
I don't know whether that's something that we can.
This is about the definition of natural boundary. Last year, at the meeting of the International Joint Commission, I asked a question, whether the backwater curve of the Okanagan River through Osos Lake, not to be confused with the backwater curve of the Semilca Min River backing up into Osos Lake, has an impact on what natural boundary is.
And it's possible.
And that was not discussed?
No.
There is no answer.
That it doesn't take part, it has nothing to do with this particular bylaw at this point. So I think we're going to leave that, and you are quite welcome to come tomorrow night. There is the second, or the next annual meeting of the, and you may attend that and ask that question there, they may be able to answer it.
I'll read this in detail, and maybe ask my question again, there.
Yeah, absolutely, you could do that. That would be a good place to do it.
I have a concern about definitions.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm going to ask for the second time, or have I already asked that? I'll go for the third time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this bylaw? Hearing none, thank you. I will declare this meeting adjourned.